I don't know if she wants to uh... So let me have something to do where she goes or whatever, but she wants to leave. The green and... If she did that, I could build her a shop somewhere. She got out of school. At least there's money, some money to be made in that. This has been some working at one of those places. I think every couple of minutes here messed up. Watched me flip out and say, "Shit, hell, that..." One of their daughters, like, she... She kept laying a little bit when she was in the... I'd like to call the meeting order. Dr. Sonny Hatcher will be leading our invocation. Sir, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, gracious and loving Father, we your trusted community leaders say thank you for allowing us to be in position to make sound and wise decisions for this community. We accept the responsibility we have before us to use these minutes well. Grant us the ability to be able to listen with care, speak with boldness and deliberation, and find genuine common ground. Our prayer and our hope is that we will in this time together seek what is noble, what is best, and what is excellent for the entire Owens Crossroads community. We offer this prayer and hope that the decisions that need to be made will move this community forward in your everlasting and ever-present love, we pray. Amen.
Terry, would you lend us some pledge of allegiance?
Lend allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice broad.
All right, Tracy, can I get the bank balances, please?
The general fund, six hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and seven cents. Sewer operations, two hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred three dollars and forty-nine cents. Municipal court, six thousand four hundred ten dollars sixty-eight cents. Corrections, seven thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty cents. Cash bond, one thousand five hundred three dollars and thirty-three cents. Judicial training funds, seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Four and five cent gas tax, fifty-nine thousand twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Seven cent gas tax, five thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Rebuild Alabama, fifty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Sewer security deposits, one hundred three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and sixty cents. Sewer capital, twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. American Rescue Plan Act, three thousand nine hundred forty dollars and ninety-six cents. Capital savings, sixty-one thousand eight hundred ten dollars and forty-nine cents for a grand total of one million two hundred five thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the bank balances and minutes as written? Motion. Got a motion from Scott, I have a second. Second from Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so first on the agenda is adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero five, resuming of property on G. Carpenter Road. Do I have a motion to adopt that?
Motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero five.
Do I have a second? Got a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, got one opposed. Any abstentions? Got one abstention. All right. So it looks like it's adopted. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero six is being tabled to the next meeting. Then we have resolution number twenty-four dash zero twenty-one, approval of payment for continuance Madison County EMA partnership. Christie, can we go over that real quickly?
We had an annual fee with Huntsville Madison County EMA for their partnership with us in case of an emergency situation. They will come along beside our first responders to help support our city in whatever we would need during a situation like that. And this is just renewal of that contract. The rate is based on the population and the percentage formula that they have worked out. I think Scott and I decided it's been about eight years. This is about the eighth year that we would be doing this partnership.
All right, I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two one. Got a motion to adopt from James, do I have a second? Second from Terry, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero two-two, Christie.
Resolution twenty-four dash zero two-two is adoption of the updated Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual for the City of Owens Crossroads employees. This is the manual that we partnered with Lexapro on. It will be made digital for all employees along with daily training bulletins, et cetera. I've printed a copy here for your convenience if you would like to see it. It's been reviewed by our attorneys, Mayor Craig, and others.
Any comments, questions on the personnel policy and procedure, Terry?
Was there a lot of changes made or just...?
Mostly additions that we didn't have in there that we needed. That Lexapro, they have a standard act of practice that we didn't have in there, things that we didn't have. So that's mostly what it was.
Elizabeth, you got any questions, come in?
No.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
James?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero two-two.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero zero two. Zero two-two.
Zero two-two, okay. Got a motion to adopt from Scott, I have a second. Second from James, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then we got resolution number twenty-four dash zero two-three, approval of payment for continuance of local government software. Christie?
We have an annual contract with local government corporation for their Delta Business License Software and Next Gen Utility Billing Software. These are the two programs that we use for business license management and sewer account management. And we've been in contract with them for more than seven years, I know. And it's probably a little longer than that. The renewal is for October 1st. We're supposed to let them know that we are going to use, so that's why it's on your agenda tonight. So this is a standard rate. It's not only a contract and the use of their software, but it's also for their support and technical assistance whenever needed, so...
All right, I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two-three.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two-two.
Got a motion to adopt from Scott, I have a second. Second from Terry, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll go around the departments. Laura, you got anything?
No, sir.
Teresa's not here. Randy's not here. Shannon, you got anything? All right, Christie, you got anything?
No, sir.
CT is not here. Jason, you got anything?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Any comments? Jason, you got anything?
It's just a pleasure to be here, your man.
All right, Sonny, you got any comments? Craig, you got anything? Mr. Deborah, you got anything?
No, we're happy to be here.
Tom, you got anything?
Chief, did you want to... Did we want to talk about the... Is there something related to landscaping?
Oh, yes, I apologize, yes. We're having issues with people planting shrubbery and bushes and stuff. One in particular that blocks the view of drivers. We've got multiple, multiple, multiple complaints about it. Somebody stepped in before we could actually get it resolved and took matters in their own hands, which is not recommended, obviously, and went ahead and cut the shrubs and stuff down. So my recommendation is going back along with the parking, but also be basically allow us to remove any shrubbery or anything that blocks the view of traffic. And that's not just there, that's anywhere in the city that creates a traffic hazard.
Yeah. So Laura, if I'm not mistaken, do we not have something already in the planning commission that deals with that? And we were also planning on updating that as well?
Yes, this is the height restrictions.
Right.
And currently the height restriction is two and a half feet to six feet. You're not supposed to have nothing in between.
Right.
And so... Right. And what we've been... What the issue is that we've been running into is the people allow it to grow up and we have to wind up one out there and be in the gardener and cutting it down. And then it grows right back and we have to cut it back down again.
Obviously, you want to be sure that it's okay.
Yes, well, just the actual, the actual remover, removal of that stuff that's inside the city's right of way.
That's a safety hazard.
Yeah, that's a safety hazard.
Yes.
And if I may, I... We've talked some with Chief before the meeting, Matt and I did, just kind of about like what we'd like to do is maybe see, get, you know, law enforcement to kind of identify those areas that might, you know, be...
Right.
You might be looking at doing that and kind of talking about it, but just kind of... Just for general information purposes, this is something that just popped up and just kind of wanted to let everybody know it was out there.
Right.
I would make a point that this area, this particular area that he's talking about specifically, whatever, has been an issue for the last four and a half years. So, I mean, it's annual thing. Our guys have had to go out there every year and trim those down so that people are not hitting each other cars or children getting hurt on bikes, because it is in a subdivision where kids are on bikes and playing in the street. And I know that y'all have been out there on numerous occasions and had to trim them down and...
We've taken pictures and stuff like that. So I've got pictures if anybody would like to see the the actual, the main spot for some corner at a stop sign, yes. And when I... And I mean, you can't see... If a car, if you're stopping at a stop sign and a car's coming, you're gonna be lucky to see the car within fifteen feet before you blow out. Even though it is in a subdivision area and they are driving slow, it's still... I have to...
So it's already part of our zoning regulations that we do not have anything between those things? So you're asking to amend that, to add it will be removed by the city employee?
Yes.
Or whoever we deem
Yes.
to do that?
Yes, that the city will...
If we hire a contractor or if we do it by a city employee, that they will be dug up and removed, not just cut down?
Absolutely, anything in the city right of way.
My question to Tom would be, is in the city right of way? Do we even have to ask because... And this would also go back to Jason over here on the planning committee stuff. I mean, is there not something that says you can't plant stuff in city right of way? And if there isn't, that should probably be the way it's written, but I don't know. This is just conjecture because I haven't heard this, so I'm just asking questions, right? I don't know. Number one, do we need something? And if we do, is it something as simple as you're not allowed to plant stuff here? And so we just take it out? That's my question.
Even if it's not planted in the right of way, if it extends into the right of way?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but you can trim it, but you can't necessarily remove it at that point, Tom. What he specifically said was removal of shrubs in the right of way. And if that's the guideline, the strict language we're following, then I would wonder, do we even... Do we not just have the authority? I don't know that we do, but do we just not have the authority to go, hey, these are on city property and we're gonna take them out? I don't know the answer to that question I'm just asking.
And I want to add on to that, what about if it's a fence or something that they've actually put in incorrectly? Like, taking down that fence? Because I know that is the case. We're not responsible for replacing a fence and we have to take it down to clean your flu?
Right.
But this is a little different, so...
It should still, like, if they build a fence into the right of way, it should still be okay for the city to come in?
And remove it.
And remove it, so, yeah.
You probably don't have the answer tonight. I'm just throwing out conjecture because I don't know. But I... This is my question back to you. Do we need an ordinance or a resolution that says we can do this? Or do we just automatically have the right? And I don't know the answer to that. That's why I'm throwing it back to you, because I don't know. And you're right, Christie, because that should fall under fences. Because don't y'all have to approve most fences through the...
Does it say that?
We don't have to approve fences, but they do have to follow the guidelines that we have in place for that. And so if we see it, we should be able to...
And you're... I'm assuming in the planning book it says you can't build a fence on city easement? Or if you do, the city has...
So I can build my fence in the easement, but if the city wants to come in?
And take it out?
And take it out? Then it's my cost.
That makes sense.
I got one thing to add after all this that I meant to mention.
Since he wants to hear that, like...
Are there the subdivisions, do they have HOAs? I mean, is this something that the HOA has been notified about so that...
They're very well aware.
Yeah.
So the citations go to the homeowner or to the HOA?
I don't think we're talking about a citation.
No, we're talking about actually just coming and removing it.
But now, your point is if you have an HOA, that HOA could have a code in and they could enforce their own citations inside their HOA. If... And if that might be one way to approach some of this, is to approach some of these HOAs and say, we need y'all to add this to your book and enforce it.
I believe it's already in this particular subdivision's HOA and they're not having any luck.
Yeah, they're located in...
They're trying to... They're reaching out to us through one of their members to get help and they're not getting anywhere, so...
So in our planning commission zoning book, notwithstanding other provisions of this ordinance, fences, walls, and hedges may be permitted in any side or rear yard or along the edge of any yard, provided that no solid fence, solid wall, or hedge along the side edge of any required front yard or along front edge of any required side yard shall constitute any obstruction to the visibility between two and one-half and six feet above canopy ground level. That also, that's just walls and hedges. Or, I'm sorry, fences, walls, and hedges. But then we even go on even further and say visibility at intersections in residential districts. On a corner lot in residential, in all residential zoning districts, no fence, wall, hedge, or other planning or structure that will obstruct vision between the height of two and one-half and six feet above canopy above the center grade of the intersection streets shall be erected, placed, or maintained within a triangular area formed by the right of way, which is exactly what you're asking about. As such, corners, lots, and straight lines adjoining said right of way lines at points which are thirty feet distance from the intersection of the right of way and measured along the side right of way lines. Now, with that already there in the book, that's the ordinance for the city as far as how to actually enforce it with removal or something like that?
That's where we are. See, that's the problem is we have the rule, we just don't have what the consequence is, and that's where we're...
Well, and the argument to this person in particular is the fact that, okay, we'll cut them down to two and a half feet. It says right there, I can have them up to two and a half feet. So you can just cut them down to two and a half feet and that's it. And that's their argument.
Okay, so they're gonna go every week and trim them down?
Right. So they... Yeah, basically they're using us as their lawn supervisor.
Well, that's not... Is it... Is it within that thirty feet distance of the intersection?
Oh, yeah.
So if it's within that thirty feet distance, I would suspect...
This is sitting at the stop sign.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's...
You've got an exception the way that's written. You have the two and a half to six, or, and you have, if you're on an intersection within thirty feet, don't put anything, right? So that's the way I read, that's the way I understood that.
Yes.
So you don't have to follow the two and a half foot rule if you're within that thirty feet. That's the way I took what you just said.
Right, but is that thirty feet from the center of the intersection or...?
I would do everything from the center of the road, Chief, just for safety's sake, you know?
And seeing that's how we did it too. That's how we was looking at it, was thirty feet back. But now, if you go thirty feet back, that's... She's still... Let me just kind of show you all.
Show me. I take your judgment on that, you know?
Just so I can kind of show you. See, this is sitting at the stop sign. So if you can go back thirty feet, you're fifteen feet there, so you're...
It's good to have a round.
But they're not just there. They are... They're all the way down the side. And so when you're sitting at the stop sign, you can't see.
Yeah, that's...
See, this is...
That's literally on top of the utility you put at that point, Tom.
Oh, absolutely.
That's so far inside the thirty feet. Even if you go from the center of the road or wherever, there's not going to be any questions.
Because in this, in this particular one, Jake said that from the center of the road, we have twenty-five feet. So it's fifty feet total. So it's twenty-five from the center out, and that's well on the outsides of that. So I just...
I think the only thing we have to pass, my personal thing, for whatever it's worth, is...
Y'all like to see it?
Is do we pass something that says that if we remove this, we pass this expense on to the homeowner or not? And I think that's the only thing we have to decide if we want to pass this expense on, give them the option to remove it, and if they don't, then do we have... Can we pass something saying you didn't follow this?
Take some of those days.
We're gonna hire a contractor. We're not gonna send a city employee out there or a police officer. We're gonna hire somebody to go out and dig this up and they're gonna give you a bill.
I think it's the same thing we do about lawns and we do about trees and all that stuff. We hire contractors.
When we pass something, is that what we pass? That would have been...
I would agree with you.
Councilman Mann, I think you're absolutely right what you said.
Because I don't, I don't want CT out there and I don't need my police officers out there. So, and it does not need to be a city employee who removes those, in my opinion. It's an independent contractor and the city... On behalf of the city. On behalf of the city, that's correct, on the correct language, on behalf of the city. And the language that is somewhere in there needs to be where we're going to pay it and then we're going to bill them for it, so that it comes back to us. So we're gonna pay the contractor and then it's up to us whether we do a lien or whether we do fines or whatever we do to get our money from them later. But we contract a contractor ourselves. But I say that whatever language... And I guess we need to put this together between now and the next time or whatever. But it should be pretty straightforward. Whatever language you put together should be something along the lines of you get so many, so many days, so just like a grass cutting notice, you go out, put a notice on the door. This is what has to happen. And they can appeal it, come to a council, give them enough time to come to a council meeting, whatever they want to have, if they want to talk about it or whatever. And then pass that, this is what happens. And then we just execute it. And then, like I said, you know, this will be a few thousand bucks to the city for now and hopefully we'll get that money back later. And, but in the meantime, we probably save money by not having y'all out there.
Exactly.
That's my take on it, for two cents or whatever it's worth. Y'all think about it, put language together. That's my take on it.
I'd like to add to that is, that's one thing that we learned about with the clerks is that we should do that for the grass issues as well, instead of the constant begging them to mow their grass. Give them the notice, tell them if they don't get it mowed by X amount of time, then our independent contractor is gonna come mow it and they're gonna owe us the money. Instead of it being constant round robbing with them, you know, please mow your grass, please mow your grass, please mow your grass.
Can we not fine them?
We can add a fine into that, having that, they don't care.
If we are...
If they don't want to mow their grass, they don't want to mow their grass.
We already have an ordinance with the fines.
Right, and I'm saying, we don't have the thing for them.
With the lawn mowing, should that not be covered with that as well?
We don't have an ordinance that says we're gonna hire an independent contractor yet. That's what I was saying, I was... We need to add that in with that. We have the same kind of rules that you gotta mow it, you gotta mow it, you have a fine, you have a fine.
My question to Tom or y'all is, can we make that one resolution that covers both of them?
It would be an ordinance and it could cover both. And it could also be an addendum to the zoning thing that says in there as twenty-four dash whatever states, this is your penalty.
I think it's smart.
Does there are natural eyes not fine them for cutting their grass and...
Some do, some don't, but it's not only HOAs, it's individuals, you know, people who aren't HOAs as well.
Like I said, this would apply throughout the entire city.
Instead of just a subdivision?
Yeah, throughout the entire city if there's an issue like that.
It should cover, it shouldn't be subdivision specific, no, it shouldn't be.
So we'll have something next meeting?
Yes, sir. I've got a note here, I'll work the board with what the zoning regs says.
And also I was contacted by the Bristol...
Research to see if other cities have done something similar, have some interesting language. If you have time, I don't know if it's... That might be worth having just to make, to see if there's something that we could copy.
Uh-huh.
You've already got it.
Also, I was contacted by Bristol Creek Board, which is their HOA, and a couple of people in that neighborhood are complaining about the street parking. And just let y'all know what my reply was, because there wasn't something official from me. My reply was that it had been going on for so long that I believe the precedent has been set that it's allowing the on-street parking and that we cannot just come in and start towing everybody's cars and removing everybody's cars that are parking on the street. For one, if we did, you ain't gonna... They ain't building the crossroads big enough to hold everybody that's gonna come after us. For two, I told them that I feel that if they could reach out to their neighborhood folks and maybe do a petition and get at least eighty percent that is an agreeance to that, then, you know, that might be something that we might look at and try to enforce. But as of right now, there's just, I mean, the driveways are so small, even though you could, they could build a little driveway on the other side. Most of those in there now are rental houses and they're not gonna spend the money. The rental companies aren't gonna spend the money and the renters aren't gonna spend the money. So I have told them that, you know, basically... Not basically, I told them that we're not gonna be enforcing on-street parking in that subdivision.
And can we not give them a warning the first time warning? And then if they don't? And then give them a fine after that? Or can we go in there and put no parking fire zone for fire trucks? Because if they're fire... I know what neighborhood you're talking about. And God help, if a house ever catches on fire in there, I don't know where the fire truck's gonna go. Try to get down between two sets of cars on each side of the road there? I mean, they're gonna go in there and clean those cars out with that fire truck to get in there to try to stop the fire from spreading on these houses. Can we not put parking signs?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to y'all. If y'all, if y'all want to do the no parking, that's, hey, that's up to y'all. If y'all want to do that and have something that says it, we'll definitely enforce it at that time. But I just didn't feel comfortable with us just going in and doing stuff without at least something from y'all's, you know, directing us to do so.
How many signs would you need to do that whole neighborhood? Because you're talking sixty to seventy dollars a sign, plus the poll, plus the votes, plus the labor.
Two, four, I don't know, probably... I'm just gonna throw a number out there, twenty.
At least, if I'm wrong.
Because you'd need to go in and out. You'd need it saying no parking from this point to that point, both directions.
I think the HOA has rules against it that they can't enforce it. They want the police to come and tow the vehicles. But we don't. But we don't enforce HOA rules.
Signs, they can't go put signs up either.
Without it, that's true. Without it being in ordinance, that's right. The only thing they can enforce is not parking in front of a stop sign or mailbox or fire hydrant.
They, one of them did bring that up, and I did tell them that if they get a letter from the postal service refusing to deliver their mail because the vehicle was parked there, to bring it to me, and we would go out there and address that situation at that time. And if somebody was blocking their driveway and I said, you know, meaning actually you physically cannot get your vehicle out of your driveway, then I would go out there and address that. But just because somebody is parking on the street behind your, I'm not, you know, which really.
From your house or something.
So anybody else got any comments up here? No comments, we'll go around the table. Terry, you got any?
Rich? All right. Hey, last time I was here, in the meeting, Assistant Minister, I didn't know what was going to be next door, and I, I told you guys, Ernest, I saw the two, four records here. It's not a hundred percent yet, but I signed the contract and I just found out that hopefully it's going to be a post office, okay? And I, I've got kind of a preliminary little, little drawing that y'all want to kind of look at, but.
It's tiny.
Never a bad thing I never said about you, do you get us a post office? You know I'm picking at you, but, you know, we've needed one for so, after so long.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's been, it's been a problem. Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't want to make that thing larger.
I know you've been working on it a long time.
I haven't.
Oh, if you'll pass it down, let everybody look at it, but it's about seventy-two hundred square feet, and of course I got to get loud on it and make sure that, that they want to put the road in beside digital, come around, so that'll be up to you guys, I guess, to approve whatever they want to do, but, but, you know, you know, with the post office here and hopefully we can get a fire hall and a police station here behind and things are all up and up, so appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, I know you've been working on that, so thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, I appreciate it too.
Yes, thank you very much.
It doesn't do yet.
No, but it's, it's, it's the first progress they've been dug in for so long, yeah.
Step in the right direction anyway.
All right, we'll go around the table. Terry, you got anything? You got anything?
I wanted to remind, we've got Fourth of July coming up, and I've already seen some people out, asking out on Facebook, can they shoot fireworks, so if we could post out there, that would be great, because then I asked, you know, I was like, okay, you know, we do have some rules, just follow them and you'll be okay, so, yeah, if we could get that posted, thank you.
Scott, you got anything?
No, sir.
James, you got anything?
Just a really quick thing, just, um, Chief's saying with parking, your, your guidance has to be taken into account because there is a grandfather issue there with what's happened, and I don't know how you address that, that was, that's what I just want to make sure we, we, we take that into account before we take action. But more importantly, I want to congratulate our, our Department 160 class, we've, they've completed three modules now, we've got one, the Hazmat module, left to go, but the three modules are the, the three steps that are kind of what you in the program, you have so many months to finish it, and based on what I've seen, I think most everybody passed the third module, so we've got quite a group of 160 folks coming through, Hazmat's fixing to start next, and I just want to say, a lot of hard work has gone in from our chief and our assistant chief and then the individuals who participated in this, I just want to say thank you for all, everyone who put effort into this, because we've come a long way in a very short few months.
Yeah, yeah. Good job. I like that, sir. You have, you've done a good job.
It's a hundred percent, Pat.
Yeah, I thought it was, I, I assumed that everybody was posting their grades, and there was just a few I didn't know, but I assumed that it was a hundred percent, but yeah, that's, that's, everybody got through that, that stuck, we had a few that had to drop off for medical reasons, but everybody that got through it passed the three modules, and that's the, you still have to pass Hazmat before you get your certification, but you have basically the rest of your life to get through Hazmat. Those three modules, you have twenty-four months, I think it's twenty-four, either eighteen or twenty-four months you have to have to complete those, it's a time sensitive thing, once you're in the program, you have to get through it. And so that is your basic firefighter one, three modules, which was, just keep the chief in mind, that's what we, that's what they've been through, and so those are state proctored exams and all sorts of stuff, so people put a lot of work into this.
All right, I have a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion adjourned, do I have a second? Motion from Elizabeth, second from Scott, all in favor? All right. Thank y'all for giving.